Welcome back. WNST, Tassie Baltimore and Baltimore Positive. We are positively into spring. It's almost like spring has sprung at this point and Don Muller's favorite time of the year. It's uh it's election season. We're going to be doing the Maryland Crab Cake Tour presented by the Maryland Lottery beginning this week. Mama's on the half shell down in Kent. We're going to be at El Guapo next Thursday. Then we're headed to Costas on the 18th, which is a great day because there's going to be March Madness on that Friday as well. And then we will be bringing it back to Fadley's, back to the homestead later on in the month of the 23rd on Wednesday morning. Don, I know you're looking forward to getting back out. You've got a lot of friends and you've been locked up in the house the last couple of years. A lot of your legislature buddies and folks that have been involved in government, you don't get to see them as much. So I know you've you've used this as a little bit of a forum to catch up with some old friends.
We're going to be out and about on the circuit and all kinds of things are happening. It's we're delighted today to welcome back good friend of of our show, Baltimore Positive, Anthony Fugit, Tony Fugit, past president of the Baltimore County NAACP, longtime community activist and and all around a good guy. We've been friends for many, many, many years. And Tony, welcome back to Baltimore Positive.
Well, thank you for having me. I'm delighted to be here today.
Well, today, you know, anybody that's following state politics, county politics is following the whole issue of maps. And we've got congressional maps in question for many people. Many of our listeners are in Baltimore County and they're very interested in the Baltimore County Council Maps, an issue that you've been passionate about, Tony, all the way back for decades now to when my boss, my former boss, Kevin Kaminitz, was very much involved in drawing the districts that pretty much ensured that we'd have at least one African American member in a county that's demographics are changing as we speak. Baltimore County in in 2022 is not the Baltimore County of 1950. And you've been on that train for a long time trying to make that point. And they're involved in a group, you're a plaintiff actually, that challenged the proposed map put forth by Baltimore County Council members. So why don't you take us from the beginning, the map that was passed and rejected by a judge. So I'm going to have you educate our listeners. Nestor and I are going to sit back, talk about the issue, why you got involved and where we are now.
Okay. And 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 Don, let and I think you you sort of led into what I was thinking in that back in 2000, when Kevin was the the chair of the council, that he initially presented a redistricting map that did not have, if you would, a minority majority district. And at that time, I was president of the Baltimore County NAACP. And we came forward and said that it's time to do that. And I think he listened. He had to give up a piece of, if you would, of what the area that he represented. And they moved, if you would, the fourth councilmatic district from the eastern side of the county and created it on the western side of the county and created the first, if you would, historical African American district in Baltimore County. It's interesting to note that he later went on to become the county exec. So he was clearly rewarded for 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 that effort and support in terms of the African American community.
Tony, in a historical sense, was it always gerrymandered? I'm talking about 40s, 50s, 60s, 70s, where you found it. Was it always sort of done on hokey pokey?
Well, I can't go back 40 50s and if you would, I'm not quite that old.
But there was always somebody drawing them up with some sort of rationale as to why it was drawn the way it was drawn, right?
Well, well, the minority population has has grown considerably, if you would, over the years in Baltimore County. And it wasn't relevant probably back in the 40s and the 50s. I mean, and oh, by the way, Baltimore County historically is one of, if not the most segregated county, if you would, in in Maryland, and maybe even in the nation in some cases. So it didn't have a rich history of doing well by African Americans. So to say that that, you know, it was an issue back then, the population wasn't there. I remember back in 2000, gentleman by the name of Dunbar Brooks did a presentation that stuck with me even to today, where he said, this is what the Browning, if you would, of Baltimore County is going to look like. And and he's no longer with us. He's passed away. And and it's interesting that he noted that he said in 2021, it looks like we would be ready for a second minority majority district. So I don't know what his crystal ball looked like, but it was spot on in terms of the population and the growth and that that it was time for it would be time for a second minority majority district.
I think Dunbar would say that his his crystal ball was called data, right? Dunbar, as we know, was one of the all time great data crunchers and his ability as a demographer, which is, I think, pretty much the way Dunbar thought of himself, was a demographer, allowed him to look into the future with some certainty and predict what was going to happen. So but I think, Tony, you touched as as folks are listening, you touched in response to Nestor's question on the key issue. And that's been the dramatic growth in Baltimore County of its minority population to where it's now, you know, more than 30% of the overall population in Baltimore County.
That that is correct. And and there's been growth on the western side of the county. And that sort of brings us to today in terms of the redistricting. And we felt that it was appropriate for a second minority majority district to be created, if you would, on the western side of the county. And we presented back early on in the process, I believe, five or six different maps that demonstrated that clearly that could be accomplished. And then when we went to court back in December, or filed in court in December, that we presented two maps that, in effect, changed the first councilmatic district and the fifth councilmatic district, one in one and one in the other, that they would become a minority majority district. Now, history, what it tells us is that that going back to the 2000, when that district was created, an African American was elected and has been elected every year since. So there is polarized voting, if you would, in Baltimore County. And I think that we were able to demonstrate that when we went to court and showed how there was polarized voting in Baltimore County. So the it's possible, it could be done. We asked that it would be done. And clearly, the council decided not to listen to us. And and we did have to take the matter to court. And and we did get an initial ruling that that put the injunction in place so that they have to redraw the map.
Now, Tony, one of the things that and we've reached out, just for those who are listening, we have reached out to council members who I think are being advised by their attorneys that they should not be on talking publicly about this issue at this point because there is some litigation involved. But it remains an open invitation.
When does it get settled? When does it have to be settled?
Well, I'll defer to Tony on that. But the clock is ticking. We have a June, we have a June primary.
Well, well, where it stands as of today is that that everything is on hold. So the county cannot hold an election, if you would, until this matter gets resolved. So
Didn't the judge, Tony, give the council until, I want to say, March the 8th to draw a new map?
To draw it, right, the 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 ruling said that they had until March the 8th to present a new map that would, if in fact, create a minority majority district or a district that would give an African American or a person of color a higher opportunity to to win the election. And I'm focusing on African American.
Just having you on locally, we're talking about one area, one county, a couple of districts here. This is going all over the country, right? I mean, this is this is one, this is your fight here. But this is going on throughout the country where Jerry, there's a word for it, gerrymandering, right? I mean, that's
Well, it's interesting in that that in most cases, when you look at it, like in Ohio and North Carolina and Alabama, it tends to be a red, blue kind of an issue in that it's a Republican, Democrat kind of an issue. I think the interesting thing to note in Baltimore County, that the three districts that we're talking about trying to reconfigure it are actually Democratic districts. So it's slightly different, in my humble opinion, of what's happening in Baltimore County than in those other situations where it's like, if you would, a red, blue type of a type of an issue.
Well, when when I've looked at the maps carefully, and when I look at them and knowing the county as we do, and we're talking about a county now that's well over 800,000 people, as you say, you know, it's had tremendous growth over the past 20 or 30 years. It looks to me, the the map that your group and Tony will ask you to talk about, who sort of comprised your group, who came together to say, hey, we can do something different here. Your group proposed one map that I guess would have people who are familiar would have divided the southwestern portion of the district, the first councilmatic district that people know now is represented by Councilman Quirk, who is retiring and there'll be an open seat there, sort of split that. And that would have created two districts. I guess when I look at it, there really are a couple of other options. And and you can speak to this. One would be to sort of go back to what you said, the way Kevin Kaminitz did it in 2000, and look at the second and the fourth again. You could probably juggle some precincts there between Councilman Patoka and Councilman Jones. I guess I've seen some folks suggest, and it was interesting, that the council could also look on the east side and see if they could branch out from just making the minority district on the west and and take a look at the east side as well for another district. So what are your thoughts about, I'm assuming your group is open to other options other than the one you just put out there?
Well, I mean, clearly, the council has the opportunity to draw a map. But it's my understanding that that the ruling said on the western side of the county and specifically addressed the western side of the county, which is what we said, where the possibility really clearly existed for that to happen. So I mean, if they did do something on the eastern side of the county, obviously, you know, we would have to review it and see what it would look like and if it would perform. And if it would give an opportunity for, if you would, a person of color, African American to win. And and we would look at that going forward if that if that's the decision and the way that the county decided to go. And and that's just it. I mean, I think that they went in the darkness and that they've not had any meetings, they've not had any discussions, they've not, you know, and oh, by the way, if they're drawing a map, they're doing it in secrecy. You know, it's not transparent to the community. You know, we've not had any opportunity to have any input. So, you know, they're sort of out there on their own. And I mean, as we said earlier, the deadline is the eighth. And that's what Tuesday. So there's not a lot of time between now and this this coming Tuesday to to have a map put together. So, you know, I'm not sure where they are at this point on that. But I would would have thought that, you know, they would want to be transparent, work with the community, given that the court has said that, hey, you need to do this.
Don, let the idiot citizen have a question here because this is where I learned something. How often do these things get thrown around? How, if I go back and look at a map from when Venetulus was running the county, how much does it look different over 20 or 30 or 40 years? Because you guys have mentioned things that happened to turn a century, starting to get up on a quarter of a century now, right? Like, you're talking about back in 2000, we're 22 years out on that, right? So how much does it change over the course of time? And when folks step up to try to change it, obviously, there's going to be differences. It doesn't shock me. It's in court.
Right. Well, the redistricting process happens every 10 years. So so basically, the maps, once settled, will will define what the geographic territory for the districts will be for the next 10 years.
But they haven't changed greatly. Is am I incorrect in saying from 1980 till now, it's wildly different? Because the populations change, right?
Well, that's not necessarily true. I mean, I think I said earlier that when the fourth district was created in 2000, I believe the fourth district was on the eastern side of the county and was moved to the western side of the county. So, you know, it's kind of interesting where you have an argument that says that people will be voting in a different district. When when the fourth was created, nobody that was in the fourth, the prior cycle voted in the fourth the following year. So it was a very, if you would, strategic move. And it created it. And I don't think that there was any heartburn when that happened. So it there can be situations where there are really major changes to a map to make something work and make it make it work well for the county.
The 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 idea of what districts should look and and before I even get there, let me back up, Tony, because I I asked a question and then we we went off in another direction. Who came together to say to the council, this map that you all have driven, I mean, drawn here, that will be dictated for us for the next 10 years, it just doesn't work. What groups or what individuals came together to sort of form this advocacy group?
Well, the Baltimore County branch of the NAACP, the League of Women Voters, the Common Cause, and then several individuals, Senator Signore, being one of the individuals. And then there were other individuals, Dr. Anita Tolson, and others as individuals that came forward in the complaint to say that this is what should be done.
Now, what do you does your group, I'll I'll take from what I've read. Okay, obviously, I've had some conversations. But I'll also take from what I've read. And it seems to me that one of the things that the attorneys for the council have said and council members who have been quoted on the record have said is that the argument that an African American or minority candidate cannot win in another district, this their words, not mine, is insulting. And it assumes that white voters will not vote for African American candidates and African American candidates are not smart enough to distinguish whether they want to vote for a white candidate. I think that's a summary. Now, you correct me of some of their arguments. And if you think I've summarized it correctly, respond to it.
Well, well, you know,
Am I accurate first?
Well, first of all, we demonstrated in court that there's polarized voting in Baltimore County when it comes to a African American running in a countywide, if you would, election.
People vote their race years, what you're telling me.
We demonstrated that that, in fact, did happen and does happen in Baltimore County. And we referenced three different races where where that happened. So so we did that. What I found insulting was that during the there were a couple of councilmen that followed that filed briefs that said, or statements that said that they were the preferred black candidate, you know, and and I found that insulting, quite frankly, that that they would say that that was the case when reality is that they were Democrats and they basically blacks vote Democrats. So for the most part in the county. So how does that make them all of a sudden then the preferred black candidate? I found that insulting. So I think that 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 there have been some insulting things that that could be considered on both sides. You know, for for them to make a statement like that, I found that as a slap in the face. And and oh, by the way, if that's the case, then what would be their issue with running in a minority majority district if they're the favorite black candidate? So why are they so opposed to that? And 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 if they're opposed to that, then they're they're conceding to the fact that there's polarized voting. You follow me? I mean, if they're saying they prefer a black candidate, then what would be the issue with them running in a minority majority district? And they could demonstrate that, you know, what they're saying is true.
Well, is yes. No, I think that's I think that's a compelling argument. Tony, is your group and you you are obviously through your stature and your involvement over the years, you're one of the leaders of the group, is your group will ready to embrace a new map if if the council comes forth in the next week and says, okay, we heard the judge, we've drawn up another map, it's not necessarily the map that the advocates suggested, but it does create two majority districts. Your group ready to accept that, an alternative map?
No. I think that it goes beyond that. I mean, it would have to be a district that we can demonstrate by the numbers that it would perform. And and if it doesn't perform, meaning that that let's say that they put a couple of black districts in one. Okay. And let's say that Pat Young, for example, runs and it's a 50.1% minority district versus 50, you know, 49 point whatever, you know, that and and the numbers would demonstrate that that would not be a performing district. That that would be unacceptable.
So you you your group, just to be clear, you really are looking to ensure that there are two districts that you're going to feel pretty comfortable saying will yield to African American council members, which, given the population of Baltimore County, is not an unreasonable request in this day and age, correct?
I think that that packing, for example, 70, one district in Baltimore County with 74% African Americans and cracking the rest of the African American population between District One and District Two is not the right approach and the right thing to do.
Well, we're going to be following this closely. We I think you've broken it down beautifully. I would tell folks, you can go on, just simply Google Baltimore County Council Maps. They'll they will all come up and you'll be able to make your own judgment.
This is a west side issue, right? This is more on the west side of where 1, 2, 3, and 4 would be, correct?
1, 2, and 4. Yes.
And 4.
1, 2, and 4 is what folks will be paying attention to. Tony, we can't let you get out of here. There's so much, we won't do Ukraine with you because that's another hour. And it depresses the hell out of Nestor and me every day we wake up. But I do want, given your years of working in the county, where are we now? In the 10,000 feet view in Baltimore County, an increasingly diverse population, which I I so think is part of Baltimore County's strength, is its richness and its diversity. I think it's what makes us really a special place to live. Where are we in terms of race relations in this county as you get around now?
Well, you know, it's interesting in that 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 there is this progress that that's being made. But but if you'd remember, you know, there was a housing complaint when I was president of the Baltimore County NAACP, and the county isn't currently living up to its end of the bargain in terms of what they were supposed to do for affordable housing in Baltimore County.
That's the creation of the 1,000 units?
Yes, that's correct. And and they're they're not on schedule to make that happen. You know, and and that's why these council districts are very, very important. I mean, I had an opportunity to to talk to the council about, if you would, two different affordable housing developments, one in the second district and one, I believe, that was in the sixth district, where, you know, they they use their pocket veto to veto the projects. And then you had the Red Maple, if you would, issue where they tried to change the zoning for height of building, et cetera, et cetera. So these councilmatic, you know, seats are very, very powerful seats. So if we're going to, in fact, affect and change these types of things, I think that having more diversity representation in the county is going to be very, very important to make those things happen. So
That's an issue, Tony. It's so and you know, Nestor, just last week, and you may not have had an opportunity to hear it yet, Tony, but we we talked with Bill Zorzy, longtime Sun reporter, and now famous by way of HBO through, you know, the upcoming We Own This City and The Wire and Show Me a Hero, which was a project that he worked very, very hard on, which dealt with Westchester County in New York, Yonkers, the mayor up there, creating public housing, affordable housing up there. And as you said, it's it's been an ongoing issue for decades. And the thought that we continue, and and I applaud County Executive Wieschowski and his effort to to move this issue forward, the thought that we continue to have difficulty creating 1,000 units over a 10 year period is it's just, it makes no sense. And particularly, if you believe, and one of the arguments that I would have with people who got very angry with me and and get very angry, I mean, you follow social media, they get very angry with County Executive Wieschowski every time he advocates for this issue, which he's been a strong advocate, is that, you know, people scream and shout at me to this day, not recognizing that nobody benefits from a concentration of poverty. It just seems so simple to me that we ought to just morally, and if you forget the moral part, just as a way of policy, believe we ought to have affordable housing options all over this great county. It makes no sense.
I can't even add to that. You're absolutely right. It does not make sense. I mean, and and the numbers say that when you do it the right way, that property values continue to increase. I'm a homeowner, you know, so
I just moved to the county, Tone. I mean, after 20 years. So I'm a county guy now, right?
So 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 so, you know, there are ways to implement things like that that make it work for everyone. I mean, I think there's this notion that it's going to drive everybody's property values down, et cetera, et cetera. And that's over history. History says that that's not the case, if done right.
Well, one of my favorite lines
On that, right? Not in my neighborhood, right?
That not not, yeah, we had Antonio Piattella on, you know, one of my one of my favorite moments and and luckily someone jumped in on when they were one of the awful moments when people were all over me for advocating for that issue. Someone went on social media and said, maybe someone ought to ask Don Mower if he wants a bus stop at the end of his street and live near a homeless shelter. Someone went on and said, well, before you say that, you may want to find out where Don Mower lives because he lives about a mile from the homeless shelter. And he has a bus stop at the end of his street. And I think his neighborhood is done just fine. It's it's this awful, awful portrait of what I'll call, quote unquote, the other, that has become such a rallying cry for the new and ugly right wing. I'm not even, they're not conservatives, they're not, it's just this ugliness that we see at a State of the Union. And it makes, as you said, where the rubber hits the road, Tony, when you've got these projects in a district and a bunch of people start screaming about them, it takes courage to do the right thing. It's it's hard to do the right thing.
And 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 it's interesting that you say that. And and when I was talking to council people, I said, look, it's time to do the right thing. It really is. Let's just do the right thing. And it can be done. And and I think with these types of issues, we know that the council matic, if you would, councilmen positions are very, very important positions. And and they have an awful lot of influence and power in terms of what happens in our county. And 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 as you said earlier on, when you have diversity, there's strength. So I think this is a good thing for Baltimore County. I think we should recognize that in terms of our diversity and make it a strength, you know, but 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 to go about it the way that they did, I mean, they clearly listened to the people in Towson and combined them. They clearly listened to the people in Lutherville, white predominantly communities, you know, the African American community says it's time to do something and it gets ignored. So it just sends a bad message and leaves a bad taste in one's mouth, you know, and 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 that's not the way that it should be, to have, if you would, going forward, six, if you would, majority districts in Baltimore County, given the population, what is it, 48% people of color now at this point?
That's our number? I added to it. I'm Hispanic. I came out here. So
There you go. You're in that number. So 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 given that number and to have, if you would, only one minority majority district.
That on the face of it, that enough said. We we could have ended the segment 25 minutes ago by saying 48% one district represented. I mean, that that at a seven, right? That
Right. That
That's why you're here. That's why you're fighting.
Right. And and you can and hope you can sense, you can feel my passion for it. And it's something that I'm very, very passionate about.
No doubt about it. Again, over the years, there's, I don't think, I don't think anybody ever questions that you're motivated by, it's funny, well, and you know, we end with Spike Lee, by doing the right thing. And again, it's, as I said, I think, you know, from what I gather, the council is back taking a look at the maps. Let's, you know, let's hope that by March the 8th, we have some resolution to this. Tony, what happens if they come back with maps that they say solves the issue and you and your group thinks it does not? What happens then?
It goes back in the court for for resolution and decision.
Okay, stay tuned. Nestor, you love social studies class. Nobody better to bring us up to date on this issue than past president of Baltimore County NAACP, Tony Fugit. Tony, Tony, we always enjoy it when you stop by. Thanks.
Don, thank you for giving me the opportunity. And I know when we talked, you said, hey, this would be a good format to, to air it. And, and, and I really want to thank both of you for having me here today and giving me the opportunity to give, if you would, my side or our side of the story.
I'm embarrassed because you've been on twice now. We haven't had a crab cake yet, so I got to figure this out.
And you let in with the crab cakes and I'm ready for one.
Listen, it's been two months since I had a crab cake. I finally had one earlier this week. You know, I'm going to be on the whole trail, beginning in, I need to catch up with you. Where's your crab cake spot? You got a spot in the county that I haven't heard of, that I don't know about? New business, something like that, or no?
No, I, I think, I think that, believe it or not, I'm, I'm a make my own, like go to Gibby's, get the crab meat. I've got the family recipe.
Got Grandma's recipe, alright.
There's a special, there's a special episode.
Temperature and you have to put the ingredients a certain way together, you know, and that's an excellent crab cake. Maybe I have to have you over for one.
When this is all over with, Don, I'm going to have a crab cake-a-thon and we're going to have everybody, Linda can bring her recipe, you know, we'll just all get together in the backyard and mix it up.
I was just going to say, sounds to me like the special episode here is the Tony Fugit crab cake episode, starting at Gibby's, showing you the family recipe. Hey, Tony, the other thing.
Can't give the family recipe away, but.
We'll get you off the air, but one of the things Nestor really is going to do through spring and summer is to promote minority-owned businesses who are doing well in crab cakes and restaurants and that. And we're going to be reaching out to you for help to connect him with that because we really.
We're going to be doing that all in May, just so you know.
Will do. Okay. All ready?
You got it. All right, Tony Fugit joining us here, of course, talking all sorts of things about Baltimore County. And Don, by the way, you, you mentioned these crab cakes and how delicious they're going to be. We're going to be at Fadeleys in a couple of weeks and we've got the issues again with getting workers to, to, to pick crabs. So we're going to be back on that issue. I'm going to ask you to reach to Ben Carden. We're going to try to circle back and, and get him involved in this. The Maryland Crab Cake Tour presented by the Maryland Lottery lets ourselves play, beginning this week. We're at Mama's on the Half Shell in Canton. Next week we'll be at El Guapo in Catansville. Then after that, Costas on the 18th and back with our friends at Fadeleys on the 23rd. Our Wise Conversations also brought to you by our friends at Wise Markets. I just made it through Fat Tuesday without having any of those little special doughnuts. So I'm feeling a little slender here. I got to get back over to Wise Markets. I am Nestor. On behalf of former Baltimore County Executive Don Moller, we are BaltimorePositive.com.